Okay, everybody, we're ready to start the seven o'clock portion of our meeting. Welcome to our MIEX student. Stand up and tell everybody your name.
Hello, I'm Nicholas. I'm a part of MIEX, so we basically observe the mayor. At the end of the year, we make a project that will do that.
Yeah, very good. All right, well, thanks for being here. Um, all right, so the first thing that we do is call the roll.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Here.
Alderwoman Abus?
Here.
Alderwoman Patel?
Here.
Alderman Fader? Alderman Hummel?
Here.
Alderman Yorg?
Here.
Mayor Harris?
Here.
City Manager Gibson?
Here.
City Attorney O'Keefe?
Here.
Very good. And now's the time on our agenda for public requests and petitions. If anybody has something they want to mention to us or ask about that is not on our agenda tonight, now's your chance, either in person or online. Anybody online? No, I cannot see that, so you'll have to tell me. All right, then, moving on, we have some unfinished business from last time. Bill number 7059, parking restrictions on Gay Avenue. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, at the February 25th, 2025 Board of Aldermen meeting, the board considered an ordinance to amend parking restrictions on Gay Avenue to improve site visibility at University Drive and the driveways immediately south of the east entrance, east side of Gay Avenue. Following public discussion, the board recommended a modified version of the ordinance that removes four specific parking spaces to improve site visibility and safety. This includes one space south of the driveway, two spaces north of the driveway, and one space north of University Drive. The ordinance has been revised to reflect this recommendation discussed by the board and is being brought back for consideration. We do have with us this evening Matt Malik, our Director of Public Works, and Rich Wilburn, our Senior Civil Engineer.
Okay, I think I'll just open the discussion, and maybe first, let's hear from the Ward Three Alders. Well, Alder, since our other one is not here. Is any comments, questions, things you'd like to say?
Um, yeah, I would just like to say, you know, I think after the last meeting, you know, the original recommendation was to remove many spaces. Mayor, I don't, you know, I know you weren't here last time, so I feel like this was a good compromise. Safety really is, site distance is a real issue over there. Certainly, the egress out of the townhomes, the new townhomes, is very difficult, so I think removing a space to the left of their driveway is a no-brainer. I mean, you just could not see it all. The other spaces certainly make visibility for the people who are leaving the townhomes that are coming, I guess, south. You know, their visibility improves. People coming up University and looking left and right, really, when it was fully parked, it's nearly impossible to see. You know, I think there were comments made by citizens last time that there are site issues, you know, around our community, and that's absolutely true. I do think that in this instance, though, you know, we've got a new development that is more parked. You know, there's just more parking up and down the street. And you've also got, you know, a new utility pool that is for the townhomes that also blocks some visibility to the left as you're coming out of University. I also think you just have an unusual area. You know, this is kind of semi-commercial, semi-residential. You've got quite a bit of traffic, you know, coming up and down Gay because of the Gay Field. You know, you've got lots of young drivers coming up from the high school that are headed to Gay Field, not to mention parents picking up their kids. And you also have, you know, cut-through drivers that are just trying to avoid traffic and, you know, heading to U-City or... So I am hopeful that the parking situation improves over there. The rest, thanks to Matt, all the two-hour residential parking signs went up. The signs were missed. They were never put up after construction, so it was great that they have. And I, Matt, I appreciate that those have gone up in the last couple of weeks, so hopefully that will help. So if people were sitting there parking all day, they can't do that anymore, so that's great. But again, I do think that this is a good middle ground. I am also happy, a lot of what people talked about last time was speed, which is a totally separate inquiry and a separate process. So Matt does intend, and the police department will evaluate speed with our actual speed testing mechanism. I think it'll start not during spring break, when everybody's gone, but after spring break. So that will kind of give us some direction on if there's some potential traffic calming measures that'll be warranted. So, and I know Gary's not here, but he is in full support of removing these spaces as well, so.
Yeah, very good.
I don't have much to add. The discussion last time was very informative, that the engineering studies and everything else, and, you know, we do need to be clear, the difference from the visibility and the traffic calming. And I do defer to the Ward Three Alder persons who are closest to this. So, and I agree, Bridgette, the compromise, going away from taking away a lot of spots to just a few, even though those few will be painful, it seems to be where this, for safety reasons, this should land. And I think, Bridgette, you said this as well, keeping an eye on it as we have the two-hour parking, as we look at the speed, and if there needs to be other traffic calming methods, so that this is, so that we continue to watch that area and make sure that we're meeting the needs of the neighbors in that area. So I do support the recommendation.
Peggy, anything?
Thanks. No, just, I, yes, I do want to just say that the comments at the last meeting, I would describe, I perceived them as very split. There were a portion of residents who did not want any parking spots removed, and, um, and the prime, like, there was a lot of suggestion that this, like, sightline issue exists in other places in the city, and so why would we, like, study and enforce or impart changes to parking restrictions in this particular location? And I think the other part of the comments that we got that night is the reason why, because people who live there are concerned about the safety and the sightlines and have asked us to study it and to make a recommendation. And so, um, in the, in light of that, you know, division and the issue being raised and the study that indicates, you know, the things that we could do to increase the safety as it relates to the sightlines, leads me to support passing the ordinance.
Yeah, very good. Rick?
It sounds like this is a solution that works for the people that are most affected by it, so I'm certainly supportive of that. And I'm glad to hear that we are going to consider, or that we're actually going to implement, a speed study, so I think that's good. I am wondering about parking enforcement. I am concerned when one of the neighbors said that people park in front of a fire hydrant all the time or do other things that otherwise ignore our parking regulations. And so I don't know if anyone can respond to, if we're going to do anything different or if there's a need to do anything different regarding parking enforcement. Any insight on that?
Now that the signs are back up, we're going to make sure, because there's going to be probably a free education period associated with that, that those patrols, as far as parking ambassadors are concerned, that those will be stepped up, at least for the next few weeks here.
Okay. And I'm wondering, do we ever take anywhere in the city a more restrictive approach to make sure people can't park there? Like, either a bump-out or some kind of a low-profile impediment or something that would prohibit a car from there? Do we do that anywhere else in the city?
I'm unaware of any physical improvements that would block parking spaces. I got head shaken in the back from our engineers.
Just for completeness, we do have bump-outs in some areas, like for downtown, but it's not done with the purpose of strictly limiting parking. It's done to also, or to really decrease the pedestrian crossing distance.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, you know, if it really was, if the sightline at, let's say, University and Gay was really an issue, then we want to make sure somebody doesn't actually park there, and that would be a way to prevent that if we found it was a problem. It's obviously a more expensive solution than simply doing what we're doing, and I have no problem with what we're doing. It just, if we had to elevate it, then that's something to do. My last question is, did, I can't remember if we discussed this fully at our last meeting or not. Did we go back to evaluate anything in our process through the Plan Commission or Architectural Review Board or anything to do with the original design of this to say we would do something differently in light of what we know now?
No, we typically don't require any kind of traffic impact study for a residential development of this size, so we didn't want to add to our process because we evaluate every driveway that came in front of us for traffic impact and/or sight distance, and that's not something at this point in time we feel is necessary.
Very good.
Obviously, I was on Zoom for the last meeting, so this may have been come up. So I'm looking at the figure and the thing, and if I'm reading it right, it says the only space that's being removed is the red clear box, which it sounds like we're removing four, so I'm just trying to figure out which of the other ones are actually removed.
There was an initial survey that was done at residents, and in that survey, the three spaces that are colored in, those were all, those are all to be removed with this ordinance, but they were also included in the survey. The one that is not filled in was not included in the survey, but is to be removed per the ordinance. But it is all four being removed.
So the city staff decided to add the red open box, and the citizens were already talking about the red.
Yeah, after the engineering review, that other box was added.
Okay. That was, everybody else has kind of said what I've generally said, and we've covered, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at.
All right, and I will just ask, I'm not sure, is there, are there any residents here tonight that want to address the board on this topic? Yeah, why don't you come forward? All right, good. Thank you very much. All right, if there are no other comments, we can move to make the amendment, approve the ordinance.
I'll introduce Bill number 7059 approving an amendment to Table 3A and Table 3I, or is that a I, Table 3I of the parking regulations in Title III of the City Code to be read for the first time by title only. Second?
Any discussion? City Attorney?
Bill number 7059, first reading, an ordinance amending Table 3A and Table 3I of Schedule III of Title III of the Clayton City Code relating to parking restrictions on Gay Avenue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill number 7059 on the day of its introduction.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce Bill number 7059 approving an amendment to Table 3A and Table 3I of the parking regulations in Title III of the City Code to be read for the second time by title only.
Second? All right, any discussion? No? Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number 7059, second reading, and consideration for adoption, an ordinance amending Table 3A and Table 3I of Schedule III of Title III of the Clayton City Code relating to parking restrictions on Gay Avenue.
Hey, it's a roll call.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Abus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yorg?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, next is our consent agenda, and I think we might have somebody here representing Five Iron Golf. Is that right? That's on our consent agenda. So why don't you come up, and we'll pepper you with questions?
Good evening, everyone. I am operator Frank JZ, Five Iron Golf.
We are super excited about it. Some of us are golfers, but others are excited as well. I see, I knew you were here for that because I saw the PGA on your shirt. But anyway, when are you opening?
Uh, we are slated to open right now, late May.
Late May?
Yes.
Okay. You know, Flight Club beat you.
They did. We found out about that, and I was a little disappointed with that. Hey, we're ready to work with them and be good neighbors.
You gotta make it perfect.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, and what, can you just describe what it's going to be like there? And what kind of food offering, and what's going to go on?
Yeah, so Five Iron Golf is a premier indoor golf facility. We're based out of New York City. They just launched their franchise program, so that's when I kind of latched on to that. I was actually in the process of opening my own facility, and I kind of got partnered up with them. We, our facility will have 10 indoor bays, all with TrackMan technology, and then that's the state-of-the-art PGA-sponsored technology. We will have a full bar inside. We offer memberships. We're going to be a very big proponent in the community for event space as well. We do lessons, seminars. We're really big on community engagement from a corporate standpoint. We're about, I think, just under 8400 square feet of indoor usable space. We've got other amenities like pool tables, shuffleboard, some bags there. Each bay is set up with a whole, like, lounge area, couches, chairs, everything. So it's good, gives you a very club feel, like a country club feel, but still very, you know, open, comfortable, inviting setting, so.
So we could just, if we haven't reserved a bay or whatever, and we're not doing that whole deal, we could just come in, have a drink, play shuffleboard or whatever, just walk in, no problem.
Walk-ins are, walk-ins are great. We do operate, you know, to use the golf nomenclature, there's a T-sheet that we have, so if we're booked up completely, that's just kind of, you know, how it is at that moment. But we are open, we have a lounger right when you walk in the front door with some couches, and it's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, 16 seats at the bar, some other lounge areas and tables. So yeah, it is, it is 100% open, 6:00 AM to midnight, open invite to anybody that wants to come check it out, whether you're playing or not.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. We're really excited. Welcome, welcome to Clayton. Anybody have other, any other people have questions for the gentleman?
Yeah. So, so I'm not a golfer, but my 16-year-old son is a big golfer, and I actually tried to figure out on your website, so can, can he go in with his friends or do you have to be a certain age?
Um, so that's a great question. Typically, yeah, when, when you're a little bit younger, we would prefer that you're accompanied by an adult, somebody of age, but, you know, there's that little bit of a gray hair. If you drop him off and they're 16, you know, as long as they're, you know, kind of following the rules, exactly. Yes, yeah, not a problem at all.
I was trying to find him a birthday present and thought maybe I'd buy him a temporary membership, but I didn't know when you guys were opening, but I was trying to figure out, so, but that's helpful. I mean, I think he's really excited.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're definitely open to anybody of any age, so.
Okay.
And to piggyback off that, even, even if you have some kids that are younger, two of our bays that are kind of in our deemed, like, VIP area are not actually just golf. They can do, like, disc golf, soccer, hockey. They're multi-sport and multi-entertainment, so. You know, if there's a situation where the kids, hey, none of these kids golf. They're eight years old or six years old even. We can put them in a bay and have them kick balls at the screen or soccer balls or something. So we do facilitate, like you said, any, any, any of all golfers, not, you know, semi-pros or whatever wants to come in, but even people that don't want to golf. We have things for them to do as well.
Very nice. Other questions, comments?
Yeah, just, I know where the building is, but what I don't know is, you know, what floor are you on? How easy is it to access? What are your hours, and how easy is it to park?
Sure. So we are right in between the two towers on the ground floor retail, outside. So it's, if you're thinking about that parking garage where you go in, we're just, if you're facing it, just to the left of that entrance, on the other side from first watch.
Okay.
So yeah, and we're open, to answer your other question, we're open from 6:00 AM every single day. I think it's midnight Monday through Friday, or Monday through Thursday, 6:00 AM to 1:00 Friday, Saturday, and then 6:00 to 10:00, I think, on Sundays, something like that, seven days a week.
That's great. And then, and will people park in the garage or street parking? What do you anticipate?
Pretty much anything. We actually have in our lease deal some spaces that we are doing validated parking for up to, I think it's eight spaces in the garage. They can utilize the whole garage. I think it's capped at 30 spaces until 5:00, but after that, the whole garage is accessible, and then street parking is obviously what they can use as well.
Right, well, good luck.
Thank you very much.
The only question I had is curiosity, like, in terms of a marketing plan, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious what your, how's that going to work? What kind of, how do you envision that, getting kind of the name out to not only the Clayton area, but just kind of the surrounding?
That's a great question. I have a meeting, actually, with our corporate marketing team tomorrow morning. So they do what's called, at least what they deem a 90-day, a 90/90, so 90 days before we open, we're going to start doing business outreach, community outreach. We're going to get into some of the groups to, you know, try to boost memberships, and I already have two hires. One's a salesperson, and she's working actively to, uh, she's actually local, but she works for corporate headquarters, which was a very convenient thing. But yeah, so she's, we're kind of working together behind the scenes right now to do a launch, to hopefully get a lot of engagement.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Do you have signage up that, so, you know, announcing you're coming soon?
We had a temporary sign for, I think, the last three months. Our permit ran out, and we're kind of deciding whether or not we want to extend that, but I think on the 17th, we have our meeting to get the, or meeting with the city to get our approval for our outdoor side.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's already in the works and has been agreed upon with the landlord and everything, but I think we're going to extend that permit to put the coming sign up again.
I know that, I hate to keep bringing up this example, but Flight Club had this giant, you know, big billboard essentially on their, on their windows, and it really generated a lot of talk and excitement and awareness. So I just would encourage that instead of a blank storefront, yeah.
We've already been talking about it. I think we took it down two weeks ago. And so it was like, hey, how do we get this back up? Like, I don't want to have nothing on the building. People know it's coming, but, you know, definitely want to see it.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, do you want to move to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
All those in favor? Oh, any discussion?
No.
And a roll call, sorry.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Abus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yorg?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, City Manager report, starting with the salary range adjustments.
Yes, keeping pace with comparator cities is essential to maintaining the city's competitive position in the labor market. Competitive salaries help attract and retain high-quality employees, reduce turnover, and ensure operational stability. Survey results indicate that the median salary range adjustment among comparator cities was 2.5% for the current fiscal year. It should also be noted that represented, uniformed employees received a 2.5% range adjustment each fiscal year per their current collective bargaining agreements. Maintaining alignment between represented and non-represented salary structures is crucial as certain non-represented police and fire supervisors under the non-represented plan, or under the non-represented plan, which is this one, a misalignment in salary structures could result in compression, retention, and morale challenges for leadership positions within these departments. At the February 25th, 2025 meeting, the Board of Aldermen reviewed options and directed staff to prepare an ordinance for formal consideration of a 2.5% non-represented salary range adjustment effective April 1st, 2025. The fiscal year '25 budget currently includes a 2% adjustment for non-represented salary ranges. Increasing this adjustment to 2.5% would require an additional $24,111.50. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance adopting a 2.5% range adjustment to non-represented salary ranges effective April 1, 2025.
Okay, very good. Let's go around in order for questions and comments.
No, for all the reasons we kind of talked about last time, I would be supportive.
Yeah, anything additional? Yeah?
I don't have any questions. I would just reiterate my concerns of the past that my understanding is that, you know, we have, this increase will have another increase regarding the step aspect in that while we need to do these things, and I'm supportive of it, these are, at least in the short run, very challenging expense factors to keep up with on the revenue side. And so I am looking forward to having discussions where we can be more creative about how we might address these issues over the long run, including engaging in some type of a citizen finance commission or something to study, not only this, but all of the various issues and challenges we have. So that's all.
Very good. Jeff?
I'm generally fine. We've covered most of it already, so.
All right, all right, very good. All right. One of the things that is not currently in this, this bill is the adjustment that would be made for both June and our city manager, our city clerk and city manager, since essentially they are non-uniform, but they are, we, as a board, are solely responsible for setting their salaries. And so I want to suggest that we go ahead and adjust their salary in concert with what we're doing for everybody else. And we might want to think about making that sort of a, something that is just automatically part of this kind of adjustment when we do it each year, which I think we'll be looking at it, or each time, might not be each year, but it might be every other year, I don't know. But in terms of, and so the idea is we wouldn't have to consider it separately each time. They would just ride with the rest of the employees. And then, of course, when it comes time for their performance reviews, which is usually in September, we then have the opportunity to make adjustments based on, you know, performance. So that's separate from these range adjustments. So if anybody objects to that, say so, and we can talk about it. I probably have not said it very well.
I think you've said it very well. I think it's clear. I just, I'm not sure that that's the approach that we've taken. I was under the impression that we looked at more or less a salary study, a salary range, and we wanted to make sure that we had competitive salaries. So substantively, I want to end up in the right place. I'm not sure that's the right way to approach it. My understanding is that we're looking broadly at other city comparables, looking at the range within a certain group, and it may be that those two positions are treated very differently, and an increase like this may be inadequate, or it may be too much, I don't know. But it just strikes me that those two positions, we have analyzed in a different way. And clearly, we want to make sure we have competitive salaries. I'm not sure that this is the way to do that, though. At least intuitively, that doesn't make sense to me.
Are they not in the grade step system? I'm going to ask David to just address those questions.
We are not. We have, we have generally tracked it, but per the charter, our compensation is set by the Board of Aldermen, so.
Outside of the grades?
So we're outside of the system. If you look at the salary system that we have, there is a grade, so to speak, for city manager and city clerk, but there's an asterisk next to both of those positions that states that the Board of Aldermen sets the salary for those positions as called for by the charter. And I don't know, in those comparator cities with those increases, whether or not they included manager and clerk. I'm sure they probably included the city clerk, the city manager, I'm not sure.
I would agree with Rick's comments. I'm not sure that I'm ready tonight.
to make that the process that we do with, um, those two positions. Certainly, I, we have phenomenal people and they fully support that. But as a matter of, um, how we handle those salaries, I would need more time to think about that one.
Just to clarify, the action we're taking tonight has nothing to do with performance or assessment of like.
Right.
Duties in the role. It is everything about, like, the municipal job market has shifted a median of two point five percent. And so we are adjusting all of our salary ranges for our employees by two point five percent. So.
So my question was.
I'm comfortable with that.
My question was two part, which is one, just what you said. And then secondly, do we want to make this a, a sort of a, a process, a practice that we always do to consider it with these range adjustments? So take, take those two separately. I think the important thing tonight is to decide if we want to go ahead and, uh, include, uh, June and David's in, in the salary range adjustment that we're making for everyone else.
Well, and I thought Andrea, you were going to say something. So is it, do we know whether or not the city manager or the city clerks were included in, as, as we were looking at comparables?
We didn't ask about those specifically, but we did ask what they adjusted their ranges to. And so.
Adjusted the ranges that included city managers and.
Yeah, some of the cities include the city managers or they show it similarly to how we show it where they appear on a grade. Um, but the board can adjust those.
I mean, sorry, I, I, I was just going to say like, I feel it's a weird situation because like we dealt with comp for June and David in like exec session and not that this is a little different. We're not talking about performance, but the whole thing is kind of, it's a little bit weird since it's direct folks that we deal with compensation on. And I would like to have also a little more data and kind of, we, we had a little bit of it when we did performance evaluations and some of this was factored in then. So it, it, it's a little bit, um, that part of the conversation is a bit out of the blue. Though I think I agree with Rick and Susan that it's not that I have a problem with it, but I kind of want to see the data as it relates to those positions and have a bit more time to think about it because I had not at all kind of actively thought about it for, for those two folks. I don't want to say I purposely didn't think about it either. But I think I was approaching that as David is basically recommending that this is what we need to do for staff. I hadn't thought the farther step of like, okay, what does that mean for us for the direct reports we have?
I mean, I'll be honest, I assumed it included them, like, because it's not performance based. We have our opportunity to evaluate them in closed session on a performance basis as we, and that will not go away. And we have the opportunity to make whatever decision we want at that point. But if we're shifting salaries in, at this time of year, based on the market and the market has moved two point five percent, I see no reason to overanalyze this. I think we shift it by two point five percent and we go deeper into depth when we do the performance base review.
I.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I, I think we are shifting everybody else's salary again, based on the market. This is not about performance. Andrea has told us that they looked at city managers and city clerk salaries that went two and a half percent. I just, and if we want to evaluate later and say that we want to just include them on any salary adjustments in the spring, then we can say that, but why, why not just add them in now?
I would just say this.
Any, and like the performance in terms of looking really in depth at, you know, salaries for city managers across the region, city clerks, we can do that in September, but.
So like, I don't, again, because there was exec session when we did all this before, so I'm a little bit uncomfortable talking about it now, but I will say there were discussions that we all had back then that factored some of this.
Performance base.
Well, it was a performance evaluation, but we also factored in comparables to others' folks. And I feel like that was in part already done. And the idea that we're then kind of trying to figure that back out, like in public session now, just seems very weird at the last minute. That, um, because I do think some of that was factored in when we did this, um, whenever we did the performance. It wasn't, it was performance and a bit of adjustments, if I remember the conversations right. But I don't, again, I don't want to go in too much detail because that was.
Yeah.
Private for a reason.
And I think that, I, I mean, we can do whatever you all want to do. I think that the way I was understanding this from my discussions with Andrea, um, wa- was that this is, um, really a market, a re- a reaction to the market, solely a rea- reaction to the market and where it has moved and what other cities are doing, which we know. Um, that is why we are taking everybody else, uh, moving all, moving the other ranges. And so, um, I, I think that, you know, it certainly affects all of our employees, including the city manager and the city clerk. And so I, uh, and, and waiting until September or whenever to do it, that, that's a, that's an actual loss for them. Um, but, you know.
It's relative to the market.
Relative to the market. Yeah, just, just relative to the market. So I'm, I'm a big believer in us staying competitive with the market. Um, I do think we have, close your ears. I do think we have top performers. And so I think we want to stay competitive with the market. So I, I would support moving ahead with this. I understand we don't want to make it automatic. That's fine. We can reconsider each time or whenever we decide to change that process if we did. But, um, I would prefer to go ahead and make this range adjustment for them. To me, it seems like a a, a sort of an administrative act almost, not performance based at all.
Mayor, could I, could I confess that this whole discussion is because I spoke up? So.
Okay.
I feel this is my fault. Uh, there was discussion of having a closed session tonight for the purpose of, of the conversation about compensation for the city manager and the city clerk. I pointed out that the Missouri Sunshine Law and the City's ordinances allow closure of a meeting when the merit or performance of identifiable individual employees is discussed, but not otherwise. Compensation for employees of the public is a public matter. And said, if you're not going to conduct a performance evaluation, this is not a matter for closed, a performance element in the review. It's not really appropriate. And I suggested to the mayor that I would draft an amendment to this bill, which raised the clerk and city manager salaries the same amount that you raised every other employee's salary in the city, uh, by the bill as written, and that that would be an appropriate subject for an open meeting. And that if you wanted to add, make your closed meeting that had been contemplated unnecessary. So I created this mess. It was not, it was not the city clerk, was not the city manager, it was not even the mayor. It was me putting my big foot into it and, and created this discussion. It is not intended to create an environment for discussion of performance by either of the employees. It does recognize that the charter specifies that the, uh, board will establish compensation for these two employees in particular. And you would discharge that by saying the rising tide will lift all boats and just, uh, provide the same adjustment that is the product of the survey of where has the overall market of public employment in the area changed since the compensation schedule was adopted. So I apologize for kicking off this awkward discussion and, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, but my reason for doing so was saying that if this is intended to reflect a market change and not a performance evaluation, that this is the forum in which that discussion should take place. That's how we ended up with this awkward situation.
And I, I just would like to, um, respond to a couple of comments that you, the mayor made. I, I believe that our charge is to, um, we have two employees that, uh, we can conduct reviews on and make sure that we are, um, um, have competitive salaries. And so we have the time and energy and resources to do this. This proposal here is, has to do with an entire city staff for which our city manager may, um, uh, manages. And so this is, and we created a whole new structure and this is consistent with that structure. For us to, um, just, um, arbitrarily add this, um, sort of diminishes the entire annual review process we go through, which is incredibly customary throughout the, of all of industry. And so why we would change that, it seems to me I, we should have some compelling reason, um, other than it's, um, seems to be expeditious to do so. I, I, I don't find that compelling.
So Rick, uh, just to be clear, are you suggesting that we not entertain an increase for those two roles at this time and that we only do it at the time that we perform?
Yes, absolutely. Every, every place that I have ever worked, every company I've ever known does an annual review. It is very customary. I don't think we're being the least bit inconsistent with any industry standard at all.
I think that's a separate question. The, the.
Yeah.
What bothers me, but what, what, what I'm struggling with is we are responsible as a board for two employees to doing the salary, which is a package analysis that we go through very, very carefully. Whether to do it once a year, twice a year, whatever is a different, a, a different question. I am not comfortable putting it into, putting it, putting a part of it in with an overall salary structure action.
Let me just ask a question. Um, how often do we look at range adjustments?
Every April one.
Every April. So.
From here on out.
Range adjustments are always on an April timing and our reviews are always on a September timing.
That's correct. Every city employee's review takes place August, September time.
So in, in the, in the instance of, and I'm just trying to better understand the process too. So in the instance of someone that's not you or June, but somebody, I'll use Matt. So in the instance of Matt, um, you know, he's, he will, he would get a range adjustment and he, they'd be considered for a range adjustment every April, but performance will be evaluated every September.
Yes. So Matt or any other employee.
Yeah, yeah.
Would have a performance evaluation, uh, in August or September. The outcome of that performance evaluation determines whether or not that individual gets a step increase on October one. So if the, uh, performance review is, is satisfactory, then on October one, they would get that pre-programmed step. So you would move one step within that grade. Uh, what we do now on, on April one and this assessment that we just did is we look at those comparator cities to see how they had adjusted their market ranges uh, throughout the year. And then in April, we make that adjustment for everyone. So, um, and, and again, the reason we, we like to do that in, in April at the mid-year, I mean, first of all, it's, it's half a year. So there is some savings because you're not doing the full year increase. But more importantly is the information you have is more accurate because you have all of the January one cities' current information, uh, which we don't have in the fall. We'd be working with a smaller set of July one cities and, and relatively stale January data when we make that decision for October one.
So if we were to just say for, for all of our employees, hey, you know, um, we give their performance reviews in, in September, why don't we just wait and, and then take under advisement whatever the range adjustments would have been because we have this information from April? I mean, why wouldn't we do that? Have it all on the same timing. That's what Rick is suggesting.
Yeah. So a- again, we, we've, we've broken this out so that on October one, everybody would get that step increase. Customarily, the, the first day of your budget, when your budget goes into effect, that's when those increases hit. And again, those are all performance based. The reason we've split the year and we do this range adjustment at the mid-year is because we've got the fresh data. We've got all the current fiscal year July one data and we have fresh January one data to make that decision on what to do with our ranges. And again, that increase only hits half a year. So if we did that range adjustment along with the step increase in October, then rather than the, the two point five percent or two point seven five percent step increase everybody gets, it would have been basically five point two five for an entire fiscal year. When you do the range adjustment at the mid-year, you're paying two point five percent for half the year and then it jumps to the five point two five for the remaining half of the year. So there's significant savings along the way as you do that. So your market ranges are staying competitive and people are getting their step increases and, and so that.
Okay.
That's the flow of the system. It's a new system. We just implemented this October first, um, a fiscal year twenty four. So I mean, this is a newer thing for us. This is the first time we've had a range adjustment come up.
Yeah, I would just note, I mean, I've led teams in a variety of companies and I think while performance reviews and annual increases are like a standard practice, there isn't one way that they're performed. And in fact, the company that I work at now, um, has, uh, like two times of year, six months apart. One where the increase is market based and one where the increase is performance based. Very similar, um, to what we're talking about here. So I don't feel like this is like deviating from some sort of industry standard that, that is like, I, I just want to point out that there are a variety of ways that industry handles this. And I think that the idea of separating the idea of like performance from market actually is pretty valuable to me. Like, I like that.
And I guess I would argue is I don't think there's a way for these two employees that we can completely separate market and performance. Because I can remember the conversations we had during the performance evaluations and there was a combination of market based conversations and performance conversations. So I don't see how we can, given the way that conversation went, I don't know how we can please separate it. So while I can understand the legal part of it, Kevin, I would, I guess I would disagree that I don't, I just can't separate them. So, um, therefore it's really hard for me to buy into the, well, this is just a market based adjustment for everybody. Because I just don't see, to me, with the city manager and with, um, the city clerk, based upon the one time I, the first time I sat through it earlier, is that both of these things also factored into that conversation. So now we're basically saying we factored it and then we're going to factor it again now? That doesn't make sense.
And when we did those reviews, was the system in place? This range system? When we did.
Reviews.
Last September?
Yes, the range was in place. So when the study happened, they compared all of the positions and they placed the city clerk and the city manager on the range, um, in comparison to their comparator cities. And so obviously the board can pick if those are the, the ranges and the steps that you would like them to be at. So this essentially is just, you know, adjusting what the range is based on.
And but, so have we ever done a, we've never done a range adjustment for these employees before?
It's a new concept for the city in general.
And under the previous plan, so this is the new concept, first time under this plan.
Yeah. So that, that might be some of what's difficult here is because the last time we did the review, uh, we were operating under a little bit of a different, a little bit of a different system, Jeff, you know, if you heard what I said. Um, last time we did it, we were sort of just moving into this system. So we did consider everything. We did. And we may not do that going forward though, because we will, if we, if we were to ad- update this now, we would have already considered the, the range, the market, the market, uh, movement. So I guess, um, what we, we, and I, you know, you guys are going to vote.
I was going to say also, I, I, I don't want this conversation to derail the range adjustments for all of the employees. So, um, we, we need to get that done so that on April first, we, we know what that pay structure is going to be and we need time to enter that information. So, you know, I'm, I'm totally fine. Let's, we can break that conversation off and, and just go ahead and if, if the board would take up the ordinance as it is, that would be great because that way we could get it done tonight. We can prepare everything for those April one increases. Um, and then we can take up the other matters separately. That's.
Yes. Okay. So I agree with that. Let me, let's just make sure we want to.
Not at all, or whatever the board wants to do.
No, I mean, I think it's something we, I think it's something we should decide. So I think it's, I think it's something we should do. But, you know, there's obviously disagreement among.
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to confirm before we, before we do that, that, that we, um, do not want to, we, that we do not want to, uh.
I don't think we have four votes to amend to include this city manager and the city clerk.
That way. So I just wanted to do a double check. So.
Plus, I knew, like, I think the mayor and Bridget and I would like to move forward that way, but the others aren't prepared to.
Yes, exactly. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay.
The bill as written does not include those two votes.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. So we just don't amend it.
Right. So, um, right. So I, I can talk, Andrea, we can maybe talk again about this because I do think there's some confusion. And, um, we can decide, I think we need to consider whether we want to separate this from the April, September, like everyone else for these two employees, because when we don't do that, we're asking them to forego, um,
Right.
Salary. So.
Having a little more time and conversation would be helpful in getting an answer by the board.
Yeah. So we can.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily opposed to the concept. I just, again, I think Susan's point, the time, and I, again, I still think that it's, it's enough of a performance base. We probably should have had it not in open session. But that's just the way I'm thinking about it. So.
Yeah. So we'll just put it on our list to bring back, I think, soon so we can get it resolved.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So we will then move on with just the ordinance. All right. So we will then move on with just the ordinance as it is written.
Yep. I'll introduce bill number 7062 approving the fiscal year 25 non-represented salary range adjustments to be read for the first time by title only.
Second? Any discussion? Okay, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 7062, first reading and ordinance adopting fiscal year 2025 non-represented salary range adjustments.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number 7062 on the day of its introduction.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill number 7062 approving a contract, no, that's, I will introduce bill number 7062.
Yeah.
Approving the fiscal year 2025 non-represented salary range adjustments be read for the second time by title only.
Good. All right. Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 7062, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance adopting fiscal year 2025 non-represented salary range adjustments.
Alderman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderman Abuse?
Aye.
Alderman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yor?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye. All right. Bill number 7063, the PUD extension, finally for you guys.
On April 23rd, 2024, the city approved the rezoning of 726 and 734 Demond Avenue to Plan Unit Development District. In addition, a consolidation plat was approved on the same night. The rezoning allowed for the reconstruction of the existing buildings into a mixed-use development featuring 24 hotel rooms, retail, restaurant, and personal care uses. The developer has not applied for or received a building permit since approval of the rezoning. The PUD and plat approvals are set to expire on April 23rd, 2025. The city's PUD regulations do provide a process for extension requests to be heard by the Board of Aldermen. The developer has submitted a letter requesting an extension of the PUD approval, giving the development until April 23rd, 2027 to obtain construction permits and begin construction. The developer is the current owner of the property and has maintained commercial and residential tenants in the buildings since prior to the PUD approval. The developer maintains that the plan has not changed and they intend to execute the plan as originally presented. City staff are not aware of any change in circumstance in the area, which would call into question the continued suitability of the land use or the project as originally approved. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached ordinance extending the Plan Unit Development Plan approval. And this evening, we have with us Anna Crane, our Director of Planning and Development Services, Ellen Reed with the project, and Tyler Stevens as well.
Okay. Ellen, would you like to come up and just talk about the project and kind of what you're looking at?
In consideration of my extension, you all, the project isn't new. You know how excited I am about it. We have made some progress, which was good. One of the key steps for us was identifying who our restaurant partner will be. That was very important to us because of the way that we intend to have the restaurant open to the lobby and have that person participate, you know, in the design drawings and how that will flow. So that was a really critical step for us, which is great. But to sort of give you the overall timeline and how it flows into the extension request, our next big step is working with Core Ten for our actual full building drawings. Realistically, that's about a six-month process, especially between going back and forth, different people with input. After we have our full construction drawings, we can then move on to the design phase of the interiors. So working with an interior designer to pick the unit finishes, lobby design, how again, that might flow in with restaurant. Realistically, that's at least six months. So one year in, we should have both our construction drawings as well as our design. Then we can get actual numbers from the construction team, which again, as much as I'd like it to go faster, I've done this before. So that's another three to six months between going back and forth. Once I have that entire package, then I can move forward through the financing piece and get loan amounts for the actual full project, go through appraisals, go through everything that I need there. And realistically, that again is another three to six months to where I could actually then permit-ready and start construction. So as much as I'd like to have it move a little faster, it's more important for me to be thoughtful and to have all the right pieces in place, which is why I'm requesting the extension.
Very good. I'm going to let the Ward 1 Alders kind of talk, but stay at the microphone in case you're needed. Yeah.
Yeah, I still think this is a great use for the site. I'm glad to hear that you're still dedicated to the project. And I'd love to know what you can tell us about the restaurant.
No, I know you were going to ask that. I'm going to wait for them to announce that, but we, I can tell you that you will like them.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thanks for the detail. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
In, in light of the timeline, so it sounds like really realistically, potentially two years to like construction, breaking, not breaking ground, but in light of that, are you making any changes to your plans as it relates to the spaces that are underutilized on the first floor, like the laundry? And did anything go into Dot Dot Dash yet?
Yes. Yes, we've got, it's a really cute new design and lifestyle boutique.
Yeah, okay.
It's, I used to shop at Dot Dot Dash on Sunday. Now I'm there. She sells like bread and clothing and it's also a little design shop. It's very cute. So the laundry mat, you know, I've kept open the entire time. That is, is, is open for the neighborhood. There is no income being made on that. I didn't want to close it. And clearly I wanted to keep that space because it's our restaurateur space. So I don't have any intent to, to close that. I don't think it does any service to the neighborhood to close it. At the same time, we're not going to occupy it because that, that is where we will have a, a change of, of use. Thanks.
Very good. Rick?
I'm very supportive. I hear lots of neighbors excited and wanting to know when they're going to see something happen. So I'm very encouraged by your comments. I'm wondering, does the timeline that you've identified, does this have any impact on your parking agreement with Concordia?
No. No, in terms of my parking agreement with them was always a very long-term, so it's not something that's, that's set to expire.
Okay. And then the last question I have just, I guess, is for the city manager, I guess. I'm just wondering, Ellen went through and explained why she needs two years and the original approval was for one year. I'm just wondering from a precedent standpoint, is, is this a common thing that we would do a two-year or is this unusual? What, what has been our practice?
The, the ordinance doesn't really give any guidance as far as what a suitable length of a, a PUD extension would be. We have extended projects in the past. It's typically for one year. In this particular case, you know, the request is for two. But the ordinance, again, doesn't provide you a lot of, a lot of guidance. It's really up to the applicant what their intent is with the project. This case is probably a little bit different because it is occupied by the, you know, Ellen is the owner of the property that wants to do the project. A lot of times when, when PUDs don't happen during that first year, a lot of times it's a, a purchase that's under contract. You know, it's maybe a building that's, that's underutilized or vacant or that's, you know, you would want to move that along a little bit quicker. In this particular case, you know, as, as we looked at this, you have a, a building that's, that's largely occupied. The owner's the one that wants to do the project. So I think those are the kind of factors that you would want to take into consideration and that's why the ordinance allows that flexibility.
Okay, great. Well, I'm supportive of that.
Other comments or questions? Oh, Tyler wanted to talk.
Just in response to that, yeah, I can't go a meeting without saying something. Sorry. Just in response to that, I've been a part, the Central Presbyterian Church project, the parking garage and the building extension. We went through a number of one-year extensions until the board finally said, why don't you quit coming here and asking for one-years and do a two-year? The last extension we got was a two-year extension for that very reason, just to not waste your time.
Great. Thank you so much. All right, Alderman McAndrew.
Oh, hold on. Are we done? I still had questions.
I'm sorry. I thought you kind of said you didn't.
No, no, no. I, I, I was, I was going to roll to Susan first. I wasn't sure.
Just a real, a kind of, the only concern I would have, obviously, but because of, you know, your relationship with the property and everything else, it's, I, I hope it's not a concern. It's just keeping the vibrancy of the neighborhood while this is going on in two years. If you have all this time to be developing it and all that, which is great and the project is really exciting. But obviously you are conscious, keeping the tenants there, keeping it something that's, that's a real asset to the neighborhood is, is really, really important with the two-year extension.
No, I'm on the same page. I mean, when Dot Dot Dash left, which was not because I asked them to leave by any means, it was important for me to, you know, continue with a new tenant that I thought would have a good, you know, fit within the neighborhood. And people have been really receptive of, of her space. So it's why I've committed to even keeping the corner open, even if anything it's cost me more and been more of a headache. But I don't want, I don't like, they can retail anywhere in our city.
Good. We appreciate that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You would never know that like there's a pending project or like it doesn't appear to be a place that is like waiting.
Not at all.
It is vibrant.
Maintaining the building, you know, it's, it's.
Absolutely.
We're maintaining the building with the same integrity. It's just that we're waiting to do what we know will be much better. But we're operating it in the same way that we would our other properties that we own.
Very good.
So just two questions real quick. In terms of the leases that you, that you have there, roughly speaking, how long are they running? I assume they're not five and six-year leases because of what you want to do, but are they, are the leases you signed roughly corresponding to the, to the two-year extension you want? Are they all year-long leases? I'm just trying to get a sense of like how long the tenant.
Are you speaking of the commercial or the residential?
Mainly the commercial, but I guess either way.
Yeah. Well, our intent is always to keep ground floor commercials. So, you know, we want to curate over time, but we're not looking to like dramatically disrupt the use of the retail. I mean, our key anchor was to find a restaurateur that we thought would best serve the neighborhood and also fit something within the hotel. But we plan to keep our ice cream store, you know, we have other tenants that might come and go within their own business needs. But the lease, a lot of the leases have been long-term leases that are expiring in a variety of different price points. Of course, anyone new who's signing, they're fully aware of the project. And so they like the idea of going more year-to-year, just to have an idea of if they want more space, if this is a business venture that works for them. So it's, the short answer is a variety of different expiration dates.
But are most of the retail running at least through the two-year extension you're looking for?
Some of them have required flexibility for their own business sake that has nothing to do with. Yeah. So I've been very generous. Some of them are in longer-term leases. It, it's just a variety.
And one other question that maybe for you, maybe for Anna, I'm not sure where we're like, when it originally got approved, is there a reason, knowing the timeline of how long it's going to take, why we just didn't approve a longer PUD to start with?
I think the original intention was to try to get the project, try to get a building permit within that time.
Yeah. I mean, originally when we started, you mean, you know how these projects work. Until you're approved, it's really hard to go to people and say, here's what we're doing. And as much as we were making investments towards it then, to go to construction drawings, you can't really start. But in the perfect world, we were excited and thinking that we could move a little bit faster. But as we started to fine-tune the plan and then realizing, we really wanted to find out who our restaurateur was. And again, to me, because I own the property and because this is a legacy passion project of mine, to me, it's most important to get it right. Yes, I would like to do it quickly. It's beneficial to do it quickly financially. But it's more beneficially to have all the right pieces in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Very good. Alderman McAndrew.
I'll introduce bill number 7063 granting an extension to the Plan Unit Development for 726 and 734 Demond Avenue Hotel Demond to be read for the first time by title only.
Second? Any other discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 7063, first reading and ordinance providing for an extension of the planned unit development permit for 726 and 734 Demond Avenue as authorized by ordinance 6879 through April 2027 and other actions related thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill number 7063 on the day of its introduction.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the minutes reflect. The board is giving unanimous consent.
Introduce bill number 7063 granting an extension to the Plan Unit Development for 726 and 734 Demond Avenue Hotel Demond to be read for the second time by title only.
Second? Discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 7063, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance providing for an extension of the Plan Unit Development Permit for 726 and 734 Demond Avenue as authorized by ordinance 6879 through April 2027 and other actions related thereto.
Alderman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderman Abuse?
Aye.
Alderman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Hummel?
Aye.
Alderman Yor?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
All right. Resolution for county parking restrictions.
Yes. Clayton Road is designated, designated by St. Louis County as an arterial maintained and regulated by the county, including parking regulations. The city of Clayton enforces the parking regulations along the north side of Clayton Road and aligns its ordinances with the county to do so. In 2024, residents along the north side of Clayton Road requested the removal of hourly parking restrictions in certain areas. These restrictions were originally implemented when the outer parking lane functioned as a through lane at certain times of the day. However, St. Louis County roadway improvements, including intersection bumpouts, have permanently converted the outermost lane into a parking lane, making the time restrictions unnecessary. St. Louis County staff support this change and are proposing ordinance revisions to the county council to remove the restrictions. If the city of Clayton approves this resolution, it will be forwarded to St. Louis County. Upon county approval of the revisions, Clayton will then draft a matching ordinance to ensure continued parking enforcement consistency. Staff recommends approval of the resolution and future ordinance. And Matt Malik is here. If you have any questions, there was a really nice diagram that shows the changes included with the RFBA.
All right. Any discussion? Questions?
I think as I understand that this was something that.
Yeah, we had.
The Ward 1 Aldermen. So I, I mean, I'm certainly supportive of this change.
True. Okay. I let the Ward 1ers go.
We're just ready to do it.
Ready to do.
I mean, the residents are ready. I'm glad to hear the county is ready to actually do something on it. So whatever we need to do to keep that going is great.
You have to promise we're going to enforce it so they'll do their, do their job.
I think it's fine. I, I just wondering though, what, what is the thinking or the strategy of having in the 6,400 block, two relatively small areas of metered parking? I, I note that these are in front of commercial buildings and so I'm wondering, did the commercial businesses request this or is this something initiated by us? What, what's the strategy there?
Get back to that. I'm sorry. I just.
They are metered today.
Those are already existing?
No, no, I know they are. I'm not, I know we're not changing them. I just am curious about that.
Yeah. So going back in time, I don't know if the businesses requested that or what the contact was with those businesses when they were put in place. The reason they're there is to, to be able to enforce the turnover in, in front of those retail spaces of the cars. And since our parking ambassadors or parking enforcement are the ones that are doing that, the meters help us recoup that as well as providing some sort of penalty or incentive for those individuals to, to move their car when the, the time elapses.
Yeah. I, I don't have any problems with what we're doing, other than perhaps if there are, if things have changed over time and there's other commercial businesses and a little space in between should be metered. It's just making sure that we conscious, make a conscious decision of evaluating it again. That, that's all. I, I don't have a problem with it.
At this point, we were, we were really focused on getting rid of the time restrictions, which didn't make any sense at this point. And had the other properties switched, I think we might have looked at adding some more meters.
Other questions or comments?
I like parking, so I'm fine with it.
You like it? Okay, good. Alderman McAndrew.
I'll move to approve resolution number 2025-04 supporting St. Louis County's proposed parking restrictions on Clayton Road.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's, that's a go. All right. The fourth quarter financial report. Mr. City Manager?
Okay. We have Karen Dilber, our Director of Finance here this evening for the financial report. I will say the numbers that you see here are basically the numbers you saw at the last meeting when we did a fourth quarter budget amendment. The financial report, of course, though, has all the graphs and the, the long-term trends. The interesting thing that I, I would point your attention to, really the easiest way to look year-to-year how things are going, I think, while the graphs are really helpful, would be on pages 49 and 50 of the packet. Page 49 shows you all of the various funds and the change from fiscal year 23 to 24. And if you go to page 50 of the packet, the general fund is broken down into its various components on the revenue and expense side and you can see the year-over-year change for each one of those. That I'll turn it over to Karen or anything else you may have to, to add.
Thank you, David. There's just a couple of points I'd like to make. To start with, our revenues are up, our sales taxes are up. And that's usually, that is actually specifically from St. Louis County, the pool taxes, the share that we get. They don't break it down by individual or industry, so I can't really tell you why those are up, except that our share went up. The utility taxes, they look like they are down and we reported that they are down 8% year-over-year. And numerically, that is true. However, in fiscal 2025. However, in fiscal twenty-three, we had a one-time payment from charter for a settlement of six hundred fifty-six thousand dollars. So, um, utilities are actually up four point two percent year over year. So I, I just wanted to make that clear for the board. And, uh, parking meter revenue is down. We had a, we had an agreement with St. Louis County for the Bonham Garage that usually generated around a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year for us that was terminated in fiscal twenty-three. So that's why year over year, you're, you're seeing a difference there. Uh, expenditures, really just the two big ones I wanted to point out, the personnel costs year over year. Uh, that's due to the new step and grade system. And then the commodities, I'm sorry, the contractual services um, are lower year over year due to the elimination of the city paid, uh, solid waste contract. Are there any additional questions or any thing you'd like me to answer?
I'll just go in order. Any questions? Questions, questions, Rick?
You must have questions. Yeah, yeah, me too. Well.
Yeah. So on utility taxes, I'm, I'm just curious on the, the universe. I assume gas, electric, probably still landlines, although that's probably declining, cable, but that's probably declining. What about cell phones? Do we collect on cell phones or is that not eligible?
We collect in some portion of cell phones. Yes, there are certain parts of cell phones that are exempt, and there's a huge list out at the Missouri's website that tells you exactly what parts we capture and what parts we don't.
And what about water and sewer? Are those utilities included or not?
Water, yes. Sewer, no.
Yeah. Okay. And you had already commented last time that, but I just want to make sure that the significant positive variance overall is largely due to deferrals. Um, as opposed to incredible cost savings.
Yes, for the most part. I mean, we did have higher revenues in certain areas than we anticipated, but the huge
Magnitude is that way.
Really is, yeah, deferrals. And that is in, um, if you look at the capital improvement fund and the IRF, you'll see where the big differences are.
Okay, thank you.
Um, but it was a little early from an audited standpoint, but thinking about conversations we've had before, looks like we're going to run a surplus this year. How does how does that compare from percentage basis of like revenue expenses compared to previous years? Like, right? Like, it's good to run the surplus, but our, obviously our revenues have gone up and our expenses have gone up. So I'm curious if we're gaining ground, losing ground as a percentage basis of the expenses we have.
Well, that's honestly a difficult question to answer because we defer every year.
Okay.
So I, I'm, I can come up with numbers for you. I don't have them here right now. I can come up with numbers for you, but what, since I, the three years I've been here, we, we defer every year. Expenses, anyway.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just trying to get a sense of, and it doesn't need to be exact. I'm just trying to get a sense of like, I want to be excited. We're going to have a surplus, but I can only get so excited if we, if, if our expenses went up larger than the surplus, we're actually going to, losing ground as a percentage of our, of our overall expenses. I'm just curious kind of where we're at.
Well, then we wouldn't have a surplus, would we?
No, you would. It, it, it's a matter of if, if, if your surplus is twenty thousand dollars, but your expenses went up four hundred thousand dollars, you're actually losing, losing ground in terms of, of, of what your fund balance and reserves can cover for all expenses. That's all it.
When we get to late spring, early summer, when we typically have that, you know, retreat time and everything else, uh, we'll have the audited numbers. And when we put those long-term projections together, you can see that ebb and flow. So you can see if some years where, where expenditures have outpaced the, the surplus growth and other years where it's gone the other way. Um, so yeah, we'll, we'll plug in all the latest numbers and we'll make sure we have those calculations ready for you.
Thanks.
We are not finished with our annual audit yet. Um, that's still in process. And every year, the last about the three years that I've been here, we've had a general fund surplus every year. So it's, you know, maybe a million-ish.
Yeah, I'm not concerned, I, I, I'm not concerned that we're running a deficit. It's more of just previous conversation we've all had about what do we use our reserves for? Are we going to use it for this project or that project? Is just making sure that the actual number is keeping up with basically the rate of growth of expenses so that we're not losing ground.
You're probably seeing a slight erosion.
Okay, fair enough.
Hey, very good. Karen, I just want to thank you for all your sales tax information. Uh, a few years back during COVID or maybe right after COVID, I, I requested a lot of this information because I really was trying to track how our businesses were rebounding. And I'm looking at these numbers and I'm, I'm looking versus twenty-one. It looks like they've rebounded. Would you say that's true? I mean, for a long time it was just, well, it's inflation, but I think now these numbers are so strong, it looks like, I think things are pretty well back. Yeah?
I would agree. Yes.
We're confident in that.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Um, okay, that's it for our business, I think. And, um, we can go round table. We have time for that. We'll start over here.
Uh, yeah, we had a planning commission meeting, um, had a, it looks like a resident on Southmore is going to get a nice new, uh, ADU. And, um, there's also a house, um, actually on my street that we continued, um, just to get some more information. And, um, there was also a CRSWC full meeting. Um, we approved some, uh, new roof coating over the gyms. Um, we also got a very, uh, comprehensive, um, kind of, um, I guess, report about the new marketing and communications program at the center, uh, Rachel Gable and, um, who's the center person. And then Lindsay was also there as well, our new communications person. Um, they're just doing a great job with social media, um, just to kind of identify, um, you know, what's helping with the marketing. And, um, so that was, that was great. The center in terms of the year-end draft, it looks like going to be in the negative about seventy-four thousand dollars, which is far better than what was predicted. Um, so that's fantastic. Um, but yeah, I mean, overall, things look really good. Rental revenue is up. You know, personal trainer revenue is up. Um, so you know, I think things are looking really, really positive over there. And it was, um, great to see that the marketing efforts seem to be working. So, yeah, it was great.
All right. Anything else from you, Bridgette? No?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, okay. Go on, Susan.
I had a Parks and Rec meeting and, um, Kate Young, who is a Wash U, I guess, intern who's working with the sustainability committee, and it's just some, done some incredible work for them, uh, presented on stormwater best practices with permula pavers and dry wells and things like that. And a lot of these are great in many areas of the country and all tend to be difficult because of our clay soil. Um, bio-swell, things like that. And what we, but still, there's something that we need to start looking at with, um, construction as, as we look at, you know, build out of, of our property in, in more and more, um, intense rainfall. And she also presented what other, other around us are doing, uh, Ladoo and Brentwood, Webster Groves. They tend to give some types of incentives or requirements for homeowners to uh, provide this type of best practices, stormwater control. And she also went to places like Des Moines, Iowa and Portland and other areas that have innovative and very successful projects to help control the stormwater. So that was, that was really helpful. The, uh, then Tony presented the Parks and Rec capital budget a little bit, looking at Shaw Park, at the pool and its floor, its floor tiling that's coming in. Um, also talked a little bit about the Handley House repairs that are being bid at this point, I think. Um, and this for fire suppression and renovation. And I know that we had talked about at our last retreat, how to handle the Handley House. So I imagine
Is there an estimate? I mean, some ballpark, you know?
Not, not that we've, that's been shared yet.
Okay.
Um, I think it's not small because as soon as those, with fire suppression and everything else, as soon as those come in, then uh, there's also discussion that the windows need to be repaired or replaced or whatever else with Handley House. So that's, um, something that we'll have to deal with. And those are the main things. And then, well, one, one fun part is that there was discussion how the parks are going again for the, the night skies applications.
Oh, great.
And as part of that, we are having, uh, on April twenty-first at eight to nine thirty, because that's when the stars come out, there is a star watch party. And it's putting, it's being put on by the St. Louis Astrological Society. And there'll be telescopes there and everything else.
In one of our parks?
This is at Oak Knoll.
Okay. What's the date again?
The date of that is April twenty-one from, what did I just say? Eight till nine thirty. So that sounds like a lot of fun. I'm sure the weather will be perfect and everything else. The only other, uh, item I wanted to report on, if I can find details, is we're coming up to the, um, the, uh, Cool Cities presentation that, that Clayton is hosting on April third. And we'll have a round table with, the, the, the presentation will start with talking about some of the climate issues that we'll be facing, that cities are facing. And that's like a twenty-minute overall presentation. Just, it's very, very similar to the one that was put on when Webster did the first pop-up. And it was, it was really informative, a little, you know, gets your attention. And then what we'll be presenting to other local governments is our, is our benchmarking um, ordinance and how we got there and how we're rolling that out. And David is doing that as well as with somebody from the Botanical uh, Green Building Council presenting that. And then the second part of that will be on, um, on our tracking of emissions. And Matt will be there with somebody else with our, with our tool, which is a cross, it's called crosswalks. And so they tell all around the area, the breakdowns of different emissions that are happening. So in real, so, so we know how to, how to best use that material, that, that information to move our city forward. So we're looking forward to that. Again, that's on April third. We hope that people can come and learn from it. And it's really, again, it's geared toward uh, city government, city officials to come and sharing information and, and the significant staff involved in this work so that we're working together on this because certainly climate doesn't know our little boundaries that we draw.
Will that be here or at the center?
Here. That's my question. Here in the chambers? Here at the center?
Current plan, correct?
Here in the chambers. Yeah, there's a Board of Adjustment meeting that was also scheduled at the same time, and that is going to be canceled due to a lack of items. So we'll be in here.
Well, how are we, um, pushing this out to other municipalities?
So they're just now putting together the marketing materials and then once that's ready, then.
Right. Then it goes to, uh, you know, again, uh, Jamie, whose name I keep
Cass Meyer.
Cass Meyer. I can never say her name, uh, is in charge of this. She's on the Webster Council and she's rolled it out to, there's a steering committee with different people uh, in the environmental areas as well as with city governments. And it goes to that group and then it grows, grows out. I'm not quite sure if she has her mailing. I don't know what her mailing list is. I will certainly be sharing it with you all too.
You will.
But it could be to all, it could be to all officials.
We should share it with municipally is what I'm thinking. Now, she might already be doing that. I mean,
I know she's aware of them, but. Yep.
And it's, um, April third in the like late afternoon, right?
Four to five thirty.
Four to five thirty.
Five thirty. The last one was in the morning. So I think the idea is what whoever's, whomever's hosting it can kind of pick the time and hopefully move it around a little bit so people can, different people can make it fit into their schedules. So it's, the word, the first one was great. So I hope that people can come and listen.
Thanks.
Becky.
Yeah, um, just a few things. I um, participated in a rally along Brentwood Boulevard on Saturday for International Women's Day. And it was super cool and fun. There were so many people there. Yeah, it was like we were li, people were lining both sides of Brentwood Boulevard, like from Panera to, um, Highway forty. And so many people and, um, and tons of great vibes from the drivers driving by, like horn honking, thumbs up. It was really, it was really awesome. Um, so that was great. Um, learning some more stuff about building code based on some inquiries from, uh, residents in Ward one. So that's always interesting. Thanks to Anna and her team for educating us on that and, um, helping us understand the process. Um, and the other main thing I've been trying to do is recruit people for some board and commission vacancies that we have. Um, and I think I've gotten like a little bit of progress, but not a lot. So I would just remind everybody this is something that we need to do and it isn't always easy. And so we want to be like always kind of thinking about who are people in the community that seem like they have interest in what we're doing, right? I mean, I've kind of started to realize anybody who like sends me an email or asks me a question even is just like someone I should think about as someone who might be interested in serving. And so, um, just a little like plug for that. And hopefully we can get, you know, keep, keep our boards and commissions active.
What are the openings that we're searching for right now?
Well, we have a vacancy, an off-cycle vacancy on Parks and Rec, um, because of Ben Beinfield's move to the school board. Um, and so that one, people are like, people love to be on Parks and Rec. I was on Parks and Rec. It's a great place to be. Yeah. So I think we've got, I think I have a couple of people who might apply to that. And it's been advertised. So like, this isn't like I'm controlling
No, no.
The, I want to make sure everybody knows it's open. It's like an open application process. I would love anyone to apply. And I also recognize that we benefit by reaching out to people and encouraging them to apply, letting them know about it in case they don't see the information in the emails. And so hopefully we get applicants and I'm sure we'll be getting the like cycle information as the term approaches in the next couple of months.
The exciting thing about Ben is he's a great
Like he's staying active.
Sitting on with the school board hat. So.
I'm so glad.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Uh huh. All right, Rick?
Great. Just to, to build on that particular comment, um, Gary and Federer and I had spent a lot of time on the boards and commissions. Um, and so, uh, while Gary's not here now, we did have a chance to meet and then I had an opportunity to meet with David today. So at our March twenty-fifth or whatever the next Friday is, strategy session, we'll be reviewing that. Um, and so we'll get that information out to you. Um, there's a lot of information to support all of that. Um, so you've got plenty of time to study it beforehand. So, uh, look forward to that discussion. Um, I would just build on Bridgette's comments regarding the CRSWC. Um, the results of the marketing campaign, just to try to put numbers on it. Um, memberships are up about seven and a half percent. So that's about four hundred members. So from twenty-five fifty-five to twenty-nine twenty-nine. And then the number of members rather than memberships is up about five percent or four hundred members. So, um, the, um, marketing campaign seems to be very effective. And so we're happy about that. So that's all great. Um, the challenge that we're facing this year is significantly higher utility costs. And so it's great to hear that our revenues are likely to increase, but unfortunately our expenses are probably increasing faster, um, due to utility costs. Uh, Becky and Susan and I also attended the municipal league meeting. Um, and so that was an interesting meeting in East West Gateway. Uh, Jim Wilde, um, presented, uh, before he presented, uh, Pat did identify that the grocery store, um, tax issue we were worried about will never make it out of committee, at least this time. So that was good news. Um, Jim did identify that, um, while our region's basic infrastructure seems to be secure for the foreseeable future, that it's not true for discretionary items. And so under the, uh, new, uh, Trump administration, he was identifying that anything that had social justice, climate or equity associated with it were likely to be cut or at least deferred in some way. And that included things, he said, that could be at risk like, um, the gateway, greenway, bike way and those kinds of things. So uh, the world is changing, um, there. Let's see. Oh, and then I did want to make sure though, David, do we, in terms of our funding for streets, how does that work for us? And are we at all concerned about, um, our applications or our, uh, for, for street funding?
Not at this point in time. The infrastructure hasn't reached that level. So it's, it's been more social programs and other things that have taken the brunt of it, but infrastructure, um, at least our projects are, are still good.
Okay. That, that was the impression I got from that discussion. Okay. And then the, um, last thing, you know, I was pleased to see that the, um, CCBA came out in favor of Proposition F, the fire safety sales tax. And so I know you met with, um, representatives there, David. So thank you for doing that. Um, you obviously did a good job. So thanks.
Um, a couple of things. If Susan already covered kind of the Park and Rec stuff, the only other point I would mention is more proactively. So Susan and I have our Ward Two coffee tomorrow morning. The Community Foundation has been gracious enough to let us use their building. So we're going to be, for those of you who know the building, we're going to be in the fireplace room inside. So, um, we figured this time of year, you never knew whether it was going to be rain, snow, cold or eighty-five to ninety degrees out. So being able to get inside the building was nice. And I, I think it's also going to be, you know, anytime that we can show off assets that the city owns, um, to residents, especially many of them able to get in there very often. Susan and I thought it'd be a good idea. So hopefully we will have residents who come in. So eight thirty till nine thirtieth tomorrow morning for, for that. So we'll have more feedback kind of on what we hear from that kind of next time. So.
Great. Um, before I, uh, give my little report, I want to ask Parks and Rec, I guess it would be Parks and Rec, um, the dog park. So now that Clover has graduated and she's able to go to the dog park. There aren't very many dogs there, and this is her principal complaint. It's like, no dogs.
You go.
Or one dog. We're trying different times. Today, we ran into the, the donor, Mr. Anderson, and he said three-thirty is the pretty popular time. So we'll try it, but, but I found out that there are only a hundred and eight members or something. What, we should have more members. I don't know why. I think that people, I was talking to a neighbor today and she said, I didn't know we had a dog park. I mean, so I'm wondering, I'm, I'm saying, could you bring this up at Parks and Rec? And could you say, you know, how can we increase membership? Do we, I mean, I don't really know if we have non-resident memberships. I mean, I would think Ladue is right there and there's lots of dogs there, so it seems like they would all want to come to the dog park. It's just no fun if there are no other dogs.
I, I will be, I will be sure to bring, to bring that up. I have no idea what typical ownership, we have them around us. That'd be interesting to find. Is a hundred and eight a good number?
I don't, I would think. The max is? No, I mean, because such a small number are going to come at any given time.
Right.
You need a lot.
You need a lot, yes.
I will bring that up.
Okay, all right, just wanted to put that out there. So, well, since I've been back in town, I actually attended something that I haven't even heard of in a long time, but a Tully Town Hall. But it was really a great one. David was one of the panelists. It was, the topic was city manager form. What is it about? Why does it work? Should we have this in the city of St. Louis? And there were other panelists too. But I, how many, how many people were online? A lot of people, like over a hundred, right?
It was just under six hundred.
It was just under six hundred, so it was over a hundred, yes. It was, I listened and it was, it was, it was good. It was really educational for people. And I have sort of, as I'm sure you all are, a proponent of that form of government. So David did a great job representing us and he did a great job answering some curveball questions. I did go to the, as did Bridgette.
I forgot to.
The Germania Coffee Brew House, the Germania Brew House. It's a new coffee place inside the Emerson Tower. And we met the owner and he seems all, you know, super gung-ho. And they have a bunch of other locations, mostly in Illinois. But, you know, we talked to him actually about adding brew to the brew house. So maybe someday he can expand into that. And this morning, I didn't, I don't know if any of you went, I went to the state of the county, the address that the county executive gives annually. Out of the Two Hill. And so that was interesting. And he, Sam Page spent a lot of time, most of the time, reviewing what a great job his staff is doing. And it gave a lot of great examples. So other than that, he did mention the use tax, hoping to put that on the ballot. Next, next spring, hopefully. And, but everybody seems, you know, with program there. And, and then, and I was just going to say, they, that's okay. No, no, they debuted their new flag. I should have brought it in here. I gave mine to David. I'm sure you have it on your desk. Yeah, yeah. So it's interesting. They went over that. So it was, it was interesting. Mostly it's a good time to say hi to a lot of people that you know and you don't see very often. So that was it for me. Yeah. All right, gang. Anything else?
Got a couple really quick legislative things. So as was stated, the grocery tax doesn't look like it's going anywhere. There's really been a shift, especially in the House, towards property taxes. So that's what's been in focus. I know that The Post had an article on it here, I think it was today. But they're looking at property tax assessments as it relates to residential property in trying to get that capped. And then also seeking to decrease the multiplier used for personal property tax assessments. So this is kind of where all the attention's being shifted at this point in time, so we'll keep an eye on that. I know the Municipal League is, as well as our lobbyists. And the other one that has passed the House and will go to the Senate relates to building codes. Energy efficiency has kind of been under attack the last couple of years, and so that's, that's happening again. The bill that was passed started with a prohibition, counties and municipalities from enacting any ordinance, regulation or other policies. That requires owners, builders or developers to implement green, energy-efficient building design and construction practices if it threatens affordability. So it's written very, very widely. So that's going to be, it remains to be seen how that would actually be applied. But during debate on that particular item, the bill was amended to add commercial and industrial properties to that as well. So basically, the bill that passed the House would prohibit any type of energy efficiency provisions at the municipal level. So the lead silver equivalency, those types of things that we've had in place would probably come under fire with this. If they could make an affordability argument, same with the energy code provisions that we have within all of our building codes. So we are keeping an eye on this one. The lobbyist is keeping an eye on it. MML is, is working against it. But the vote was a hundred to forty-seven in the House. I imagine that the Senate will probably be inclined to vote in a similar fashion. So we'll keep an eye on this and see what happens, but it would definitely impact us here. Again, if applicants could make that argument that it somehow impacted affordability of the construction, so.
Would this apply to our, this wouldn't include something like our benchmarking program though, then? Since it's about cost of building.
This, right, this is for building design and construction practices. So this would be for, for basically new construction or renovation to buildings, but the benchmarking program would still be okay.
Okay.
David, is it something that, as we look at evolving our code? For example, if you get points for doing something, it's not necessarily a requirement because you're getting a benefit. I mean, is it, this may impact how we look at.
That's correct.
Updating our code.
Yeah, you make, you'll have to find ways to almost incentivize the practice, and so points would be a way to do that.
All right. If there's nothing further, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Set. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thanks for coming.